We're gonna go ahead and get started. Mayor Salinas is running a little late, so with that being said, I'm calling the meeting to order. And the first item is the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start heads, please, and join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we pray for the decisions we face and the abilities that you have given us. Give us wisdom and strength in all we do. Today we come before you with heavy hearts as we remember the events on September 11th. We are humbled, God, by the bravery of the first responders, and we ask that we can continue to heal and help each other with unity and kindness. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Good afternoon, City Council. I come before you to do a quick presentation. I'd like to call up to the stand Mr. Jake Longoria, CDP Officer Jake Longoria, Mr. Bill Kemp, and Mr. Robert Tijerina. Are you here? Let me see him walk in. And I'm here today to honor Mr. Longoria and Ms. Tijerina. And let me read the story that happened. On July 17th, 2016, at 10:30 PM, Customs and Border Patrol Agent Jake Longoria was in the Whataburger restaurant located at 201 East Griffin Parkway when there was smoke and flames coming from the residence behind the restaurant. CDP Officer Longoria immediately ran to the scene of the fire and called 911. At the same time, neighbor Roberto Tijerina was alerted by his son that smoke was coming from the rear of the home of 312 Violet. Mr. Tijerina proceeded to walk outside and over to the residence of the fire. Upon arrival, Mr. Tijerina saw that CDP Officer Jake Longoria was at the scene knocking at the front door of the residence. Mrs. Tijerina informed Officer Longoria that the person living in the home was an elderly gentleman with a sleeping disorder. Officer Longoria and Mr. Tijerina together proceeded to knock on the door as loudly as possible to try to get the owner's attention. After doing this, the homeowner came to his door and Officer Longoria advised the elderly gentleman of his house being consumed in flames and they needed to evacuate. Mr. Longoria took Mr. Kemp by the arm and coached him out of the harm's way. Officer Longoria then stayed with the elderly gentleman so he would not re-enter the house and injure himself further until fire and police arrived. Mr. Tijerina and CDP Officer Jake Longoria both residents of Mission. Both may perform without hesitation. This means actions epitomize the definition of a standing citizen. Due to their active bravery, the Mission's fire department would like to recognize Roberto Tijerina, a Customs and Border Patrol Agent, Officer Jake Longoria as good neighbors and valiant citizens of the City of Mission. Because generally like this makes Mission a great and safe place to live in. Thank you. Can you take a picture with the council?
Sure.
On the other side.
Good job, sir.
Yes, Mr. Kemp.
Good job, sir.
All right, I can come this way, yes.
And then in three, two, one, smile. Do one more, in three, two, one. We got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you take a picture with the council?
Sure.
How do we go back there?
On the other side.
I'll wait to see.
Good job.
Good job, sir.
Yes, Mr. Kemp.
Officer, good job.
Thank you, sir.
What are you doing?
In the middle.
Okay.
All right, I can come this way, yes.
That'll be even.
And then in three, two, one, smile. Do one more, in three, two, one. We got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
You look amazing.
No, I had many to see.
Just take care of you. Keep your spirits up.
Well, you look great. You do. You look great.
You know who's his brother? Sandra Lucille.
Sandra Lucille Kemp.
That's her brother.
Okay, okay. We both went to school with Sandra Lucille.
Good, good. Glad to be able to help that man.
The Lord put me at the right place at the right time.
Seven years.
Seven years.
Good to see you.
All righty. On the next item, Chief.
Mayor Protan, members of City Council, the proclamation before you today is a National Day of Remembrance for Murdered Victims, and it reads as follows. Whereas the national parents of murdered children establish September 25th as a National Day of Remembrance for Murdered Victims as a result of the unanimous passed resolutions by U.S. Senate on October 16th of 2007 and the U.S. House of Representatives on May 14th of 2007. Whereas POMC believes that honoring the memory of victims who have been killed by violence and acknowledging the results, long-term trauma for families, communities, and the nation is an important way of promoting public awareness and remembering our loved ones. Whereas POMC chapters, contact persons, and other organizations such as the Rio Grande Valley Families and Friends of Murdered Children, Inc., will be holding an event commemorating the Day of Remembrance for Murdered Victims on Sunday, September 25th, 2016. And whereas in 2015, there were an estimated 15,000 homicides nationwide, of which the Rio Grande Valley experienced 47 homicides, one murder every 37 minutes in the United States. Whereas survivors of homicide victims are scattered across the Rio Grande Valley and are in need of specific and targeted intervention in the aftermath of a homicide that starts with death notification and goes far beyond the burial and, in some cases, the trial. Whereas survivors of homicide victims transform their pain and anger into power and action by honoring the memory of their loved ones impacted by homicide. Through leadership, grief support, and advocacy, survivors are reducing violence and promoting prevention and policy change on a local, state, and national level. And now therefore, we, the City Council, the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim September 25th, 2016, the National Day of Remembrance for Murdered Victims. And we urge all the citizens of Mission, Texas, to join us for the Fourth Annual Candlelight Vigil. We are the survivors. Join together, we are strong. Located at the FAR Civic Center at 1011 West Cali Avenue in FAR, Texas, from 6:30 to 9:00 PM, taking cognizance of this event and participating fittingly in its observance. Proclaimed on this, the 12th day of September of 2016.
Thank you, Chief. Is there a motion?
I move.
I'm sorry? Did you say something?
I was gonna say, if you didn't have a motion, but they already...
Oh, yes. Yes. Okay, there's a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor Protan, with me today is, from our department, is Lieutenant Jody Tiddles, who runs our Criminal Investigation Bureau, and Investigator Arturo Tijerina, that also kind of our lead investigator with a lot of our homicides. But especially, I want to invite Robert Garcia up to the podium. Robert is the president of the Rio Grande Valley Families and Friends of Murdered Children, Inc., here in the Rio Grande Valley, and obviously, he'll be coming up to say a few words and also recognizing the family of murdered victims here with us today. Robert?
Thank you. City manager, members of the City Council, communities, and my families. It's a little somber for me because, as we recall, in the presence of 9/11, but also our murdered victims, tomorrow will be my brother's, when he was murdered back five years ago, so it'll be the fire year anniversary. So part of this is to bring awareness, as we know, but, you know, the tragedy to triumph, to victory, and blessings. The blessings are the families that are the resilient, that you see right behind me. The babies that were left because of the turmoil that happened with the tragedy of homicides. And when we talk about homicides, we want you all to know that we don't have a disease because sometimes it's very difficult when we hear the word homicide or murdered. We don't like to sugarcoat it as a killing because of child abuse or a killing. It is a murder that it was not justifiable. Somebody took the life of a victim. Somebody took the life of our loved one. Somebody took the life of a daughter, an uncle, a son, a grandson. So when we talk about, we bring in awareness and the blessings that are kept behind. You know, one thing that I can tell you, in the five years that we've gone through this, and four, there will be the Candlelight Vigil, I have seen firsthand, and some of you all have attended the Candlelight Vigil, the powerful of the message and the voices of our loved ones that we keep in our heart, in our memory, because we are the voices. And to understand that the stigma behind the media, the stigma behind the law enforcement at characterizing the victim as a prostitute, a home trafficking victim, a child abuse victim, at the end of that, when you pull that onion, I tell people, this still belonged to somebody. It still belonged that it was my brother or my daughter. So what I say to you and the community is, one, be compassionate. Understand that we, as survivors, are very important, not only as a taxpayer, but as a citizen of the Mission, the families that we serve. But it could be your loved one, one of these days, that might, hopefully, we will not be part of the survivor club. The survivor club that you didn't want to be part of. But now the bond is together, it's us that brings it together. And for right now, I'm gonna bring the families over so you can see. I have Ms. Martinez. Ms. Martinez, we have Ms. Ramos, the Martinez, Mr. Garcia Alberto, we have Ms. Solano as well, and certainly myself. We have five families right now that we come to you in a very humble, humbly way of telling you, this is where our loved ones was. And your support, not only by the proclamation, has put the community in notice that you are tolerant and also understanding on this particular day of celebration, on the 25th. That is our day, I tell people. That is a day that you all will serve us for that particular day as bringing awareness. And lastly, I would like to also say, if you all can provide any monetary donation, contribution to the particular event that day, every dollar that is spent is going back to the families. Last year, we had about 450 families. We're expecting about 600 this year. And as you all know, one is too many. But with that, I would like to ask to certainly take a picture on behalf of my families that we serve, the families that are here. We have also another event with the City of McAllen, we speak at five, recognizing, I have another group of five to eight families over there. And then during the overtime, we just did the City of FAR last week. City Commission will be next week, and also the City Commission and, I mean, the County Commissioner in Hidalgo and Cameron County on the 20th. But thank you. Thank you for also, you know, for the last three years being supportive. And Chief Dominguez has been very supportive since day one, and you all attended, even yourself were recognized, Mr. Garcia, you attended the first time that we were there, and you were instrumental with your department investigating Khalifa's case with Ms. Martinez. So we thank you with that.
Sure, Garcia, thank you for everything that you and your organization does. You know, our heart goes to all the family members. I've got to mean Ms. Khalifa and her family very closely when I was the chief, and, you know, you all speak for a lot of families, so I want to thank you and commend you for the job that you do, and if you can continue doing that for the rest of the families, we appreciate that. We'd love to take a picture with the family.
Yes.
We'd also like to give them a chance to say a few words if they would like to as well.
I just wanted to thank the City of Mission, well, when you were chief, for everything that you all have done for my family, for Christine Jacqueline Khalifa, who was murdered April 17th, 2012. It's been a long road. It's been hard, but these children keep me going. Those are her children that I'm raising, and I see her in them, and that's what helps me and motivates me to keep going. And also, the support group has been excellent. We're there for one another. Some of us have gone through trials and stuff and can counsel, you know, the other members. And grief isn't, everybody grieves differently, and you see it in all the people. And it's hard, but like I said, if they see you moving forward, I'm hoping that I give that strength to that other person to say, hey, if she can do it, we can do it too. You know, but thank you very much, City, you know, Mission, the Police Department, Chief. You know, thank you.
Thank you. You wanna get together for a picture?
Yeah, ready, hold on.
Right here, right here.
Candy, candy.
Wait.
You'll get candy after the picture.
We're hiding Martin. What do you want me to do?
Okay.
Just the right size.
Sorry.
All right, look over here, and in three, two, one. Do one more. Right there, in three, two, one. Perfect. Okay, we got it.
I saw love candy.
I was outside.
Jasmine, this is AJ.
Left it in my car, I'm sorry.
I'm not here.
That's my piece. This is yours.
Thank you all very much. And we'll go on to item number five, a presentation of certificate of achievement on our finance department. Mr. Garcia is gonna make a presentation.
Mayor, City Council, good afternoon. We do have a presentation today. This is for an award that has just been received for the City of Mission, and this is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, has been awarded to the City of Mission by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, which is called the GFOA, and this is for its comprehensive annual financial report, which is called the CAFA. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. The CAFA has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users groups to read the CAFA. And the GFOA is a nonprofit professional association serving approximately 17,500 government finance professionals with offices in Chicago and also Washington, D.C. I'd like to recognize our finance department. If they can please come up here with me, with Ms. Anchivela heading the department. And really, just a great feeling to be here in front of them and giving them the certificate. I think it's a great accomplishment. If I'm not mistaken, this is the 15th year in a row that this group gets this recognition, and again, it tells us how transparent the department is and how the financial reporting is down throughout the nation. So I want to congratulate them, thank them for their hard work, and I think they deserve a big round of applause. Now, before we go up and take a picture with the council, also, Anchivela's been with us for approximately 12, 10 years now, and she's gone up the ranks from accountant to assistant director, and as of last Friday, I've appointed Anchivela as our new finance director for the City of Mission. So congratulations, Anchivela.
You all look very familiar. Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you. That's right.
And then in three, two, one. Do one more. And then three, two, one. Perfect. We got it.
Congratulations on both, on both things, especially that one.
Yep. Now, that's yours. Now, we have our chamber of commissioners give us a report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. On Friday, August 26th, at 8:00 AM, the Chamber hosted a Coffee Connections networking event at Jitters Coffee. This month's sponsor was Burt Ogden. It was probably one of the best turnouts we've had in months. We had excellent feedback from our members and the community. Please check in on our website to see next month's date. On Wednesday, September 7th, we hosted our first new member orientation. We invited new and current members of our Chamber to get to know the benefits of their Chamber membership. We also introduced our team, their roles, and how we can all work together to make sure their mission business is given all the tools and resources needed to be successful. The Mission EDC was kind enough to allow us to utilize their new seed building, and we had many great comments on the facility as well as the orientation. Carne Asada, Mission, is a new Mexican restaurant that does barbecue, and we were very happy to help them celebrate their opening on Friday, September 9th, at 10:30 AM. They are at 12:15 East Expressway 83. Special thanks to Mayor for taking time out to join us for that. Thank you. We appreciate it. We will be welcoming nine round at 2310 East Expressway 83, Suite 6, with a ribbon cutting on Friday, September 16th, at 10:30 AM. Please feel free to join us as we welcome their new business to Mission. And once again, in preparations for our, we are in preparations for our annual banquet. It will be taking place on Thursday, October 13th, at Mario's Banquet Hall. We are currently accepting sponsors. This year's theme is the roaring twenties, and we anticipate a big turnout and an entertaining evening for all. Thank you. That is it.
Thank you. Any questions for the Chamber? If not, we have our department reports are in your packet. If you all have any questions, don't hesitate to ask now.
I move for approval as presented, Mayor.
Second, Mayor.
I have a motion, and second, go ahead and approve the department reports as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Gase, motion carries. Citizens' participation, do we have anybody from the audience who would like to address the council? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm Tomas Tijerina, and I was here 10 years ago, actually 11, because this would have been the 11th. And after 10 years of a Thanksgiving table at Renee's, I regret to announce that the event is going dark this year. With thousands of deliveries made via the Turkey Taxi and thousands more served on-site, it's my turn to say thank you to everybody for helping after 10. Of course, I want to thank Palm Valley Church, Mission Chamber, the South Texas College Culinary Department, numerous restaurants and organizations, including La Estacion, the Cimarron Country Club, Bailes, The Corinthian, they would help me make mashed potatoes, gravy, you know, whatever it took to get it going. El Tigre, and of course, Ida and Jesse, who've been with me the whole 10 years. You, Your Honor, you were the first person to tell me it was a good idea, and it was with the owner of Channel 4, sitting right behind me, right about there. And he gave me my first monetary donation of $2,500 on the spot when he heard the plan. I know that a lot of people's lives have been touched, but I think it's ready to do something else. I want to welcome anyone who'd like to pick up the baton, and I will be glad to show them the way, but my hips have gotten harder and harder to recover from that thing, and I want to leave gracefully. It's been hundreds of donations of time and money, and I really hate to say goodbye, but this should show you that you should never underestimate what a man will do to avoid dinner at the in-laws. But you know I have great in-laws, and that's just a joke. But again, to all the Chamber, to all the council persons that helped, of course, our city manager, he's been very helpful, city secretary. It's an event that I'll never forget, and I'm so glad you trusted in me to, in the name of the City of Mission, go out and help those persons that needed the help the most. The Bible quote that we always live by was 2535, Matthew 2535. And, you know, when you're helping the poor, you're as close to Jesus as you can get, because he said, "When you did it unto them, you did it unto me." So we can remember those 10 years for what they were, and if anybody wants help, please feel free to call. I want to thank you, Your Honor, for all the faith you had in me. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tomas, thank you for your help.
Anybody else who would like to address the council?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Welcome guests. I'm here to invite you all for an event that my company, Build, my name's Pedro Ayala, I'm with Build, Building Urban and Innovative Land Developments, an acronym. We are having it at the Edinburgh Museum of South Texas History, and it will be on October 4th. The title is Building Urban Cultures, and this is a three-part series, education series. The first one is titled Historic Architecture and Preservation Ethic, and the second one will be Walkable Neighborhoods, and the third one will be Health by Design. This is going to be focused in Hidalgo County, and we'll have it in three different cities. That's the plan. And hopefully, we can have one in Mission. The objective is to have a panel discussion. We'll have speakers, Dr. Francisco Ojalo from UTRGV, Evan Thompson from Preservation Texas. He's the go-to man when you have a building that you want to preserve, or you want to talk about preservation tips, or tax incentives, tax credits, that kind of thing. We're gonna have Charlie Garcia, architect, and also Mission ISD. They are at 12:15 East Expressway 83. Special thanks to Mayor for taking time out to join us for that. Thank you, we appreciate it. We will be welcoming nine round at 2310 East Expressway 83, Suite 6, with a ribbon cutting on Friday, September 16th, at 10:30 a.m. Please feel free to join us as we welcome their new business to Mission. And once again, in preparations for our annual, we are in preparations for our annual banquet. It will be taking place on Thursday, October 13th, at Mario's Banquet Hall. We are currently accepting sponsors. This year's theme is the roaring twenties, and we anticipate a big turnout and an entertaining evening for all. Thank you, that is it.
Thank you. Any questions for the Chamber? If not, we have our department reports are in your packet. If you all have any, any questions, don't hesitate to ask now.
I move for approval as presented, Mayor.
Second, Mayor.
I have a motion and a second. Go ahead and approve the department reports as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Citizens' participation, do we have anybody from the audience who would like to address the council? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm Tomas T. Herina, and I was here ten years ago, actually eleven, because this would have been the eleventh. And after ten years of a Thanksgiving table at Renee's, I regret to announce that the event is going dark this year. With thousands of deliveries made via the Turkey Taxi, and thousands more served on-site, it's my turn to say thank you to everybody for helping after ten. Of course, I want to thank Palm Valley Church, Mission Chamber, the South Texas College Culinary Department, numerous restaurants and organizations, including La Estacion, the Cimarron Country Club, Baize, the Corinthian, they would help me make mashed potatoes, gravy, you know, whatever it took to get it going. El Tigre, and of course, Ida and Jesse, who've been with me the whole ten years. You, Your Honor, you were the first person to tell me it was a good idea, and it was with the owner of Channel Four, sitting right behind me, right about there. And he gave me my first monetary donation of $2,500 on the spot when he heard the plan. I know that a lot of people's lives have been touched, but I think it's ready to do something else. I want to welcome anyone who'd like to pick up the baton, and I will be glad to show them the way, but my hips have gotten harder and harder to recover from that thing, and I want to leave gracefully. It's been hundreds of donations of time and money, and I really hate to say goodbye, but this should show you that you should never underestimate what a man will do to avoid dinner at the in-laws. But you know I have great in-laws, and that's just a joke. But again, to all the Chamber, to all the council persons that helped, of course, our city manager, he's been very helpful, city secretary. It's an event that I'll never forget, and I'm so glad you trusted in me to, in the name of the City of Mission, go out and help those persons that needed to help the most. The Bible quote that we always live by was 2535, Matthew 2535. And, you know, when you're helping the poor, you're as close to Jesus as you can get, because he said, "When you did it unto them, you did it unto me." So, we can remember those ten years for what they were, and if anybody wants help, please feel free to call. I want to thank you, Your Honor, for all the faith you had in me. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tomas, thank you for your help.
Anybody else who would like to address the council?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Welcome guests. I'm here to invite you all for an event that my company, Build, my name's Pedro Ayala, I'm with Build, Building Urban and Innovative Land Developments, an acronym. We are having it at the Edinburgh Museum of South Texas History, and it will be on October 4th. The title is Building Urban Cultures, and this is a three-part series, education series. The first one is titled Historic Architecture and Preservation Ethic, and the second one will be Walkable Neighborhoods, and the third one will be Health by Design. This is going to be focused in Hidalgo County, and we'll have it in three different cities. That's the plan. And hopefully, we can have one in Mission. The objective is to have a panel discussion. We'll have speakers, Dr. Francisco Ojaro from UTRGV, Evan Thompson from Preservation Texas, he's the go-to man when you have a building that you want to preserve, or you want to talk about preservation tips, or tax incentives, tax credits, that kind of thing. We're going to have Charlie Garcia, architect, and also Mission ISD School Board trustee. He will be on the panel discussion on behalf of the education system. And then Gustavo Ayala-Guevara, who's an artist from San Antonio. The objective, again, is to build awareness and education within the, within the community, to find ways to, how, to, how to build consciousness within the community to respect our historic buildings and not destroy them, find ways to repurpose them. And so, we'll have several boards, we'll have ten boards of different buildings within Hidalgo County that exemplify that title, which is Building Urban Cultures. I know that Mission has a lot of nice downtown buildings and a lot of history, so maybe you all, hopefully, will be able to participate. We'll have a meet and greet with the keynote speakers, learn about local, state historic preservation efforts, tax credits, ask questions about their amazing stories, and how your city can benefit. So, I have the invitation, if you all would like one, I'd like to give it to you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if you have any questions, the information is on the invitation. We have registration online, we have opportunities for tables, maybe, you know, I've invited a lot of cities in Hidalgo County, a lot of positive reviews from Hidalgo, City of Hidalgo, City of Farr, Edinburgh, I've even gotten calls from City of Corpus Christi, you know, anybody really can attend, so it's an opportunity to benefit on the resources that we'll have, all under one roof. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who would like to address the council? If not, we'll go ahead and go into our public hearings. We don't have any, eh?
We don't have any, no, sir.
No, Mayor.
We have the disposition of minutes from the City Council meeting that we had on August 22nd, 2016. We do need a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 3.1, I'm sorry, 3.0 is the acknowledgement and receipt of the minutes that we had for our board members on August 19th of 2016, so we do need a motion to approve the acknowledgement of the minutes that we had for the Mission Civil Service Commission.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.0 is the approval and authorization of, of a donation approximately 3,297 acres from...
3,000.
Is that three?
2,000. Go ahead, Danny.
3.2.
Yes, Mayor.
3.2.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. This is, item 4.1 is approval of a resolution number... 1475, accepting a land donation of approximately 3.297 acres from M.L. Rhodes, LTD. The City of Mission has experienced continuous growth on the southwest area of the city to include future annexation projects. As a result of this growth, the need for police and fire protection in the area will be necessary. Meetings have taken place between Mayor Salinas, our city manager, and Mr. Rhodes, which have resulted in a donation of a 3.297 acre tract of land to the City of Mission to be used as a police and fire substation. This resolution, which is attached in your packet, authorizes the mayor and/or city manager to determine the fair market value by appraisal, negotiate the terms, extend necessary funds, and execute all documents necessary to effectuate the conveyance. Staff recommends approval of ordinance, of the resolution.
1475.
1475, Mayor.
We do need a motion to approve a resolution.
So approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve resolution 1475. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
We really want to thank Mr. Rhodes for what he's doing and donating the three acres. 4.2.
Yes, Mayor, 4.2 is an agenda dealing with the approval of an ordinance. The ordinance number would be 4389. This is adopting the fiscal year 2016-2017 annual budget for the City of Mission. And let me read the, the budgets accounts here. The general fund budget is budgeted at $49.3 million, the utility fund budget at $26.4 million, the golf course fund budget is at $1.1 million, the capital golf course fund at $64,118, solid waste fund budget at $5.9 million, special revenue funds budgets at $10 million, capital projects fund budget at $14.1 million, the group health fund budget at $3.8 million, and the debt service fund budget at $4.7, giving us a total budget this year of $115,008.15.
Any questions from the council?
I make a motion to accept it, Mayor.
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second to go ahead and accept the budget. As, as Mr. Martinez has read, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Or...
4.3, Mayor, is agenda item dealing with an ordinance, 4390 is the ordinance number for the adoption of the tax rate, and an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mission, Texas, levying and ad valorem taxes for use and support of the municipal government of the City of Mission for the fiscal year 2016-2017, providing for apportioning each levy for specific purposes, providing when taxes shall become due and when same shall become delinquent if not paid, and providing for exemptions for the elderly and for the disabled. The tax rate for this fiscal year 2016-2017 is 0.4962 for 100 property value. In addition to establishing the tax rate, this ordinance provides a $10,000 exemption for the elderly and a $10,000 exemption for the disabled. The city will also continue the tax freeze established in 2005 for the elderly and disabled, ensuring the total amount of ad valorem taxes paid will not increase. The interest in sinking rate will be at .0558, the maintenance operation .4404, giving us a total tax rate of 0.4962. We're asking to adopt the approval of this ordinance, which is 4390.
I move for approval.
Okay. Second.
So, you're, you're, you're reading that, what's about, what's your tax rate?
The tax rate will be at .4962.
4962.
Right, instead of the 4988 that we have, Mayor.
Okay, and the ordinance number?
4390.
4390?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion. Did I have a second?
Yes.
Second, to go ahead and approve ordinance 4390. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. The next item is item 4.4, is the approval of ordinance...
4391, and this is adopting the Mission...
4391?
Yes, sir, 4391, and this is adopting the Mission Economic Development Corporation fiscal year 2016-2017 annual budget, and this is attached with a resolution, which is 2016-07, that was approved by the MEDC Board on Tuesday, September 6th, 2016. I am recommending approval of the EDC budget, which attached is in your package, and this is, in case there's any questions, we do have Mr. Alex Me here, present in the audience regarding the budget.
Move to approve. Second, Mayor.
A motion and a second to go ahead and approve ordinance 4391. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.5 is the approval?
This is approval of ordinance 4392.
4392.
And this is adopting the Mission Economic Development Authority fiscal year 2016-2017 annual budget. And again, this is attached formally, it's to adopt the 2016-2017 city budget. Also attached is EDA resolution, which is 2016-01, that was approved by EDA on Tuesday, September 6th, and again, I'm recommending the approval of the EDA budget. This is a budget that we use for the sale of the lands over at the industrial park. There's appropriations of $235,200.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and a second to go ahead and approve 439, adoption of ordinance 4392. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 4.6.
Item 4.6, Mayor, is the approval of publicity and tourism agreement with the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce, Inc., and this is for fiscal year 2016-2017. These are the funds that are received from the hotel motel occupancy tax under VAT's tax code, Section 35, 1.101, to use hotel occupancy tax funds for attracting and promoting tourism and the convention and hotel industry. Attaches a copy of the 2016-2017 agreement to be effective October 1st, 2016 through September 30, 2017, in the amount of $370,000. The budget is included for your review.
I move for approval. Second.
A motion and a second to go ahead and approve the budget of $370,000 for the Mission Chamber of Commerce. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
We have Mr. Lerma at...
Mayor, Commissioner, good afternoon, Mr. Garza. The next four items pertain to the chapter, chapter 143 of the Texas Local Government Code, which is civil service. Item number seven, or 4.7, Mayor, would be the approval of the classified positions for the Mission Fire Department for the fiscal year 1617. In your package, it includes the ordinance, and also includes the classified positions that were approved by the Civil Service Commission and recommended by Chief Lopez, and the classified positions will be deputy chief, captain, lieutenant, engineers, and firefighters, and the numbers for 1617 is four deputy chiefs, six captains, seventeen lieutenants, fifteen engineers, and twenty-four firefighters, and that plus the chief include, will make it a total of 67. But at this time, we're requesting approval of the classified positions that are in your packets.
Be ordinance 4393?
Yes, sir. Move for approval.
A motion and a second to go ahead...
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I just want to let you know that on the certification part, you have the intermediate in advance. Maybe on the next, next time, you can entertain the master's, because it's my understanding, eventually, we're going to have a master's certified.
I think that's in the, in the next agenda item, sir. Right now, it's just the classified positions.
What, what was that?
I think it's here.
It's pertaining to pay, so I'll do it in the next item.
Okay, thank you, sir.
At this time, we just need approval of the classified positions.
Okay, we have 4393, we have a motion.
Yes.
I second them.
And some, and to put a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. You have, next item.
On the next item, Mayor, is item 4.8 is the approval of the base salaries and incentive package for the Mission Fire Department for fiscal year 1617. The ordinance is included in your packets, and based on the budget that was approved previously, it shows the base salaries and incentive package that was approved by the, by the city council, and I think, Dr. Okanya, your question as far as education pay or certification pay, it's something that can be discussed, I guess, at the next, the next quarter, and at this time, the budget, this is what was presented and approved.
No, I understand, but, but to take it back to the Civil Service Commission, and for them to entertain the possibility of adding a, a master's certification.
What is it that Mr. Okanya wants?
At this time, Mayor, on the certification pay, there's intermediate certification and advanced certification, but firefighters, there is a master's level. I think at this time, we only have one individual that has master's level certification in the fire department, so we hasn't been brought up as far as submitting it for the incentive package, but it's something that certainly we can look at for next year, and we'll go back to the commission and back to Chief Lopez and sit down, that maybe next year, we can, we can include master's pay, but at this time, I believe we only have one individual that has master's certification, but it's something that we can certainly look for. I think the budget has already been approved, so at this time, we just need to get this approved.
Well, let's see what happens in the next year.
And we'll look at it for next time.
Oh, thank you.
We'll advise the Civil Service Commission.
We have a little motion to approve...
So moved.
Ordinance 4394.
I move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second to go ahead and approve ordinance 4394. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
On the next item, Mayor, item 4.9 is approval of the classified positions for the Mission Police Department for fiscal year 1617. In your package, you, you'll see the numbers. The classified positions we are requesting approval are lieutenant, sergeant, corporal, and patrolman, and the numbers are, for lieutenant, we have four lieutenants, for sergeants, we have eight, for corporals, we have nine, and patrolmen, we have 125, and this 125 do include the three positions that were approved back in July. That brings a total of 146, plus two assistant chiefs, plus Chief Dominguez, his staff is a total of 149. At this time, we're requesting approval of the classified positions.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve ordinance 4395. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
On the next item is 4.10, is the approval of the base salaries and incentive package for the Mission Police Department for fiscal year 1617, and you do have included in your packets the history of what we've done here in the, for the Mission Police Department, includes the base salaries and all the incentive package in your, in your possession. To, at this time, we're requesting approval of the base salaries and the incentive package for 1617.
I move for approval.
Second.
A motion and a second to go ahead and approve ordinance 4396. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. 411, Mr. Guedes.
Authorization to purchase tires from Mission TX Smart Buy Contract 1523 V02 via tire centers for the sanitation department. Seeking authorization to purchase tires from Mission TX Smart Buy Contract 1523 V02 via tires centers for the sanitation department for fiscal year 2016-2017. These will be purchased as, as needed.
So moved, Mayor.
I have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the authorization to purchase tires.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Item 412, authorization to extend third-year renewal service disposal agreement with alert waste. On September 30th, 2014, the City of Mission entered into a contract with alert waste in reference to waste disposal services. The contract term were for seven years. Staff is seeking authorization to extend contract for the third-year agreement with alert waste. The service disposal agreement will be extended from October 1st, 2016, to September 30th,
We need a motion to go ahead and approve the authorization.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 413, Mr. Terraza.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. I'll be presenting on behalf of Mr. Terraza. This agenda item 4.13, staff seeking approval of change order number one, to install two additional gate valves on the existing right-of-ways of Holland and Los Venas Road for the 16-inch waterline loop project. That's on the vicinity area of Military Highway, that's for the new project. And the total amount of the change order is $19,000, 3.6% of the original contract amount. Change order, of course, is less than the 25% cap set by the Texas Local Government Code. Staff seeking approval of change order number one for this project.
So moved, Mayor. Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Meats, item 414.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is regarding, or it's asking authorization to declare Mission EDC's old office furniture that we had at the old office, and minor equipment. As you all know, we moved into a brand-new building, and we got some new furniture, so we're... So we're declaring our, our old furniture surplus.
Want to approve?
Second.
The motion and a second. All those in favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Benson.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Item number four point one five, authorization to award bid for, for the construction of a restroom facility at the Armufo Tatán Rodriguez Junior Park. City Council previously authorized staff to solicit bids for the construction of restroom facilities at Armufo Tatán Rodriguez Junior Park. The city has, City Mission has accepted and opened seven bid responses for this project. Staff is recommending awarding the bid to Jack's Construction, who is lowest responsible bidder, bidding all the specifications in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. Your bid attachment is attached.
So moved, Mayor.
Breakdown totals.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and authorize, authorization to award bids for the construction of a restroom facilities to the Armufo Tatán Rodriguez Park. What is your budget for it?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand?
Yes, sir.
Fifteen?
Fifty. Five zero.
Five zero?
Yes, the lowest bid came in at thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred.
Thirty-nine thousand, okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
James Shaw, the owner of Jack's Construction, is here. If you have any questions for him, he's back here. Thank you.
Thank you. Item four sixteen is the board appointments on the juvenile justice delinquency prevention advisory board.
Uh, yes, Mayor. This is due to two resignations that we currently have on the board. Mayor's recommendation is to appoint Charles Austin, M.D., a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty eighteen. And I believe Dr. Austin is here with us today. And also to appoint Dora Fumante La Garza, who unfortunately was not able to be with us today, but is really excited to serve on the board. And her term is to expire December thirty-first of twenty seventeen. And these appointments are due to the resignation of Eddie Olivares and Mr. Charlie Leal.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the recommendation.
Second.
A motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Four seventeen.
Mayor, City Council, the Mission Police Department is requesting authorization to accept the twenty seventeen comprehensive electric traffic enforcement grant program from the Texas Department of Transportation. The twenty seventeen step program is designed to provide grant monies to increase seatbelt enforcement, speed enforcement, and DWI enforcement throughout our community. The grant amount is sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and forty-two cents, will be utilized for enforcement purposes. The in-kind match of twenty-two thousand, six seventy-eight fifteen required by the City of Mission will be matched, submitting for hours of work by police dispatchers, police tailors, working during grant activities by police officers, municipal court subpoenas, and by accessing a fee for the use of the police units being used during the step program. And also for the purchase of public information and education materials to promote the program. Again, we're requesting authorization to accept this grant.
So moved, Mayor.
Second. We have a motion and a second to go ahead and authorize to accept the twenty seventeen step comprehensive grant of the State of Texas. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four eighteen.
The Mission Police Department is requesting approval of a resolution for the purpose of submitting an agreement for the temporary closure of state right-of-way to the Texas Department of Transportation for the eighth annual Mission Pink Walk Run for Breast Cancer Awareness Event to be held on Saturday, October the first, at, on Anzalduas Highway between the hours of seven a.m. to eleven a.m. The agreement is required by the Texas Department of Transportation for the temporary closure of Anzalduas State Highway from the eastbound Furniture Road at Interstate Two to the six-thousand block of South Anzalduas Highway. The Mission Police Department will be responsible for securing the Mission Pink Walk Run for Breast Cancer Awareness Route to ensure the safety of both motorists and pedestrians alike. Again, we request authorization to submit it to the Texas Department of Transportation.
Resolution thirty, forty-three ninety-seven, we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Resolution fourteen seventy-six.
Fourteen seventy-six.
I'm sorry.
Second.
The motion and a second to approve Resolution fourteen seventy-six. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item four nineteen.
The Mission Police Department is requesting approval of a resolution for the purpose of submitting an agreement for the temporary closure of state right-of-way to the Texas Department of Transportation for the third annual Tata dash five K run event. The agreement is required by the Department of Transportation to, for the closure of the southbound lane of travel, the right lane of Cherry Road, between Colorado Street and one and a half Cherry Road. In addition, the runners will turn around at the one and a half mile marker and travel on the north lane of travel of Cherry Road to its original start point, which is Gold's Gym. The Mission Police Department will be responsible for securing the third annual Tata dash five K run event route to ensure the safety, again, of motors and pedestrians alike. Again, we request authorization to submit it to the Texas Department of Transportation.
Move for approval. Second.
The resolution is fourteen seventy-seven. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four twenty.
The City Council authorized staff to solicit bids for the removal and installation of a security fence and gate at the main police station. The City of Mission has accepted and opened four bid responses for this project. Staff is recommending awarding bid to Central Fence, who is the lowest responsible bidder, bidding all specifications in the amount of thirteen thousand, four eighty-seven. There is a bid tabulation sheet, Mayor and City Council, that is the lowest responsible company, Central Fence, out of far Texas. Also, this amount will be paid throughout, through the, our drug forfeiture funds.
What's your bid?
Thirteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
We need a motion to go ahead and authorize to award the bid of thirteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
I move for approval.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four point twenty-one, the approval of professional services agreement with Hollis, Rodledge, and Associates. He's here.
Yes, he is, sir, Mayor. He, he was here early today.
He's been waiting for it.
Approval is being requested to enter into professional service agreements with Hollis, Rodledge, and Associates with the City of Mission and the Mission Police Department. Consultation is to be performed, these type of services regarding planning and state and federal relations, grant availability and writing for these both entities. The term of the agreements are for October first, twenty sixteen, through September thirtieth, twenty seventeen, in the amount of two thousand five hundred per month for each of the agreements.
We need a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve professional service agreement with Hollis, Rodledge, and Associates. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item four point two-two is an ordinance to amend personal policy manual for employees of the City of Mission. In reviewing the city's personal policy manual, staff has proposed a number of revisions or updates in accordance with legal recommendation. Attached is a list of the revisions. The proposed ordinance will amend and restate the personal policy manual effective ten one of twenty sixteen. Staff reviewed said revisions and concurs with the recommendation to approve said, said policy revisions. Staff recommends approval of the proposed revisions. Attached to the item, you guys have a list. There's six policies. I'll go ahead and cover each one. Um, the first one is policy two hundred point oh three, which is employment classifications. This is not a change, it's just a clarification. We're adding one statement to the retiree definition. And that statement is for retiree health coverage eligibility, see the insurance policy. So we're just letting them know, for insurance purposes, they have to refer to another policy to see what the eligibility requirements are. So that's not a change, just a clarification. The next policy is three hundred point oh nine, drug and alcohol use. On this one, we are adding a statement. Post-accident drug and alcohol testing will also be conducted immediately upon proper notification on all employees operating machinery and/or equipment. Right now, we had it where all drivers would be drug tested. So we're adding employees operating machinery and/or equipment. That's a change. The next change we're adding to that drug and alcohol policy is drug and alcohol testing will be conducted immediately upon proper notification on police and fire employees who discharge a firearm. So that's a new, that's a change as well. The next, the next policy is five hundred point oh two on holidays. On this one, we're not adding any holidays. We currently have twelve, so we're still going to have twelve holidays. What we're doing is, we currently have three days where an employee has, it's an optional holiday, so they have three days to select that optional holiday. We're removing the option for them, and we're making New Year's Eve a holiday for all city employees. So we still end up with twelve holidays.
Okay. You've got a lot of changes here. I'm going to ask that we go ahead and table this item, and come back in two weeks, and I want to see what you want to change, or what you are recommending, because I have no knowledge of what you're doing.
Okay.
Okay? I'm, I'm serious. I don't. So if the council wants to do this, that's fine, but I, I just don't think that, I want to make a vote on the, on the, on this, on these changes unless we go very slowly, and I, I really mean that, so.
I, I move to table, Mayor, and I think it's a very good idea. And I would, I would like to add that if, if we have any policy changes in the future, that we have a first reading at one meeting, and then actually adopt them at a second meeting.
Second reading, and a third reading, we'll go ahead and approve them.
We can do that.
But this is too much for me to swallow right now. Okay. So we need, so we need a motion to, to...
Well, I, I'm, I move to, to table, Mayor.
Yes, we have a motion and a second to table. Item four twenty-two, the, the, um, policy manual that employees, amending personal menu, but, personal.
Policy manual.
Policy manual. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Four twenty-three, budget amendment for capital project.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item four point two-three is the approval of the attached budget amendment. There's only one. This request is in our twenty sixteen Certificate of Obligation Series Capital Projects Fund. The amendment is to allocate the related bond funds of twenty million, two hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars in revenues and appropriations. Revenues account for the bond funds received, which settled on August eighteenth, two thousand sixteen. And the appropriations account for the purchase of land, construction, and professional services for an event center, the payment of cost of issuance of the certificates, and other related expenses as approved by City Council on July twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen, through ordinance number forty-three seventy-eight. This item is now before you.
I move for approval. Second.
Okay, the first, the twenty thousand, two, two thirteen is for the bond proceeds on the premiums? That was on the settlement?
Settled on August eighteenth, twenty sixteen. That's when the...
Was settled in August? What did we settle?
The bond, the actual certificate of obligations.
The receiving of the certificate of obligation for the, for the event center.
Okay.
So if you, if you break it down, seventeen point six are for the bond proceeds, and two point six is actually for the bond premium. How much is costing us for us to go out for a bond? So we're establishing a, a, a budget of twenty million, two hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and twenty.
That's going to be a budget for the community center?
Yes, sir.
For the construction, yes.
For the construction.
And the purchase of the land.
Okay. That has nothing to do with, um, Mr. Meats' property?
No.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation?
Approve the attached budget amendment.
The budget?
Approve the budget amendment?
Approve a budget amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, approve a budget amendment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a vote, I can...
For the next item, Mayor, I move that we take this item out of, from the table.
Second, Mayor.
Motion and a second to go ahead and remove from the table. Item, um...
Five point one, sir.
Five point one.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item...
Vote on it.
There needs to be a vote, Mr. Mayor.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Go ahead.
Okay. Item five, five point one is the, the authorization for staff to, authorize city manager to enter into negotiations with the firm for appraisal services. And staff received three appraisal services, proposals, and two of the firms were unacceptable due to incomplete solicitation requirements. And one of the firm was, uh, was deemed complete. And so staff is seeking authorization to enter into negotiations with the firm that was, uh, qualified as per the requirements on the appraisal services. That, that firm that was a complete appraisal solicitation was Leonel Garza Jr. and Associates. And the authorization is to enter into negotiations.
I move for approval.
Which is, which, which one are you recommending?
It's Leonel Garza Jr. That was one of the three that was complete solicitation. The other two were uncomplete, Mayor.
Okay, Leonel Garza Jr.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion.
Second.
A second to go ahead and accept the recommendation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions, uh?
No, Mayor, no comments, sir.
No comments? I don't have any comments. Do we, we do have to go into executive session?
Mayor, do we move into executive session pursuant to BTCA Government Code, Section five-five-one point zero-zero-one, Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, before we, we go into executive session, I apologize, but with regards to the agenda items, item four point two and four point three, those items were taken up by the council, and there was a unanimous vote. I just want there to be clear, for the secretary's minutes purposes, that all five members of the council voted in favor of approval, because there does need to be a record vote. And so if there's no objection to any of those items, then, then we will reflect that in the minutes.
Three one and four point two?
Four point two and four point three, Mr. Mayor.
Which is the adopting of the fiscal year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen annual budget. That's four point two. And four point three is adopting the tax rate, Mayor.
And just as long as there's no objections by the council, then we'll reflect that in the minutes that, that all five members voted yes.
And we didn't get the five word members to vote yes.
No, and then if we could retake those two items?
I vote yes on those two items, Mayor.
No, you just didn't say anything. You just didn't vote. You were very hesitant to vote on the budget. I don't know why. But we're going to vote now and raise our hand.
And this, this is for item four point two, Mayor.
Is everybody raising their hand?
Yes, sir.
The right hand, okay. That means that, higher, Mayor, for me. We have the motion and the second, and all those in favors are raising their hand right We have the motion and the second, and all those in favors are raising their hand right now. No, motion carries. And then we'll go on to item four point three? That's on the tax rate.
Yes. That's for the tax rate, yes, Mayor.
Okay, the tax rate is what?
Zero point forty-nine sixty-two. This is for the adoption of the tax rate.
Raise your hand. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Photo? Anybody wants to take a picture with us? No, we're talking.
And we have to vote?
Sure. All in favor? All in favor.
Need a motion to recess?
So moved.
I mean to reconvene? We have a motion to reconvene, Mayor.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Mr. Mayor, on item seven point one, a, uh, discussion of pending litigation in C thirty-nine zero six sixteen H, David Jena versus City of Mission, um, if the Council's inclined to authorize the city attorney to take all necessary actions to defend and prosecute all claims on behalf of the City of Mission, and to take, uh, all necessary actions, uh, in C thirty-nine zero six sixteen H, David Jena versus City of Mission.
Aye, so move, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I mean to, um?
To adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Adjourn, yeah.
Second, Mayor.
We have motion and second, all those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.